All right, we'll jump right into and call the city council workshop meeting to order.
Okay, so where we were, where we're starting tonight is on the fire station project. So in front of you is some additional information about the proposed fire station project. Brunton Architects, Tom and Corey are here to answer some questions. We also have city staff and then fire station building committee as well. So the, a little background before we get started. So the building committee met last week to discuss the, the project. And it was, I, I think it was a really good conversation. I think we really pushed, or I really pushed them to have the discussion or open a discussion on what we can do to possibly lower the cost of this project. You know, what are the, what are the absolute needs of, for the fires department? What are kind of some of the wants that we can maybe put off initially or for a little while? And so after a lengthy discussion, we kind of came to this conclusion that we were going to have the architects come back with some ideas of things that could possibly get taken out and maybe done at a later time or scrapped altogether. So things that we could eliminate, we would, we would obviously have the council decide based on pros and cons if that's, if those things we wanted to, we want to take out kind of line by line eventually. And then we also thought another way we could do it is with alternates. So we would have the building, but then we could, when we put it out for bid, we could say, well, what if we removed this? How much could we deduct off the building that way? Or what if we added this later? So I, I'm not doing this any justice. I'm going to have the architects go into this a little bit more and describe kind of what we have tonight. And, and, and where we can kind of look at the project differently. What, like whether it's different flooring, lowering some of the square footage on the mezzanine, stuff like that. So I'll let you guys go into kind of where we can reduce costs while maintaining the needs of this, of this project. And then I can let Andy, Andy speak too. But yeah, so that's, that's kind of where we're starting.
Don't want to get off too far into the weeds, but why don't we start with, you know, where this started and how Brunton got involved and how we got to where we are today? How about that?
Who would that, would, you want Rod to speak briefly to that? Andy?
Somebody, let's just, just start. When, when did we start planning this fire station? When did we choose the architect? How that architect get chosen?
Why don't we already know that? We already know that. We're kind of going backwards here. That's my opinion.
Can somebody?
I mean.
Did we, did we talk, did we talk to any other architects during the time? Who, where did this, how did this start? Who, where did, did the city council approve the, the process of building a fire station?
That, 2012. We talked to, I can't think of the name. Thompson or something, and then he drew plans up and did some stuff. I think everything, you know, basically didn't pass. We didn't get our grant or anything and we went through it all. I don't remember the years now. It was, we did a feasibility study. And group was, how should I say? I talked to a number of different architects and they were the ones that would do feasibility study for the station. And that's how that all started.
Plus they also were offering a grant at the time, if I remember correctly.
We had some originally drawings when we had the old, the old property that Casey's now has. We had some drawings at that point. That was at least 2015, maybe earlier. Well, probably earlier even. Yeah. Yeah.
And that's when we determined a lot.
And we saw that in Casey's and we did the feasibility study, or feasibility study was done. And determined that, that property we purchased now was the most appropriate.
We did a comparative analysis on, I think about four or five different models. Very, very, we even put together a grant application to, you know, the AICAR, I think, and got that approved to pay for 100% of the cost of the feasibility study. We did all of that work for you guys and got that approved. So you're now out of the contract with $0. The, that was how it all started.
From that study, we do less than, Dr. Bill, it should be, or it's quite a.
Okay. All right, Corey, do you want to go on with? If you want to come up to the podium and whatever highlights you have, I mean, we don't need to rehash everything.
Yeah, Maggie was, Maggie's correct. We had a conversation, a little bit more specific conversation about the council's goals. I couldn't attend the last meeting. I apologize for that. I wanted to, but I, it was pointed out that you, you folks are interested in looking at options. And we took it upon ourselves to try to figure out some options that we could list for you that have, and then assign cost to those. Back in, so last summer, we worked with you, put together a, a concept, a plan that we could assign some, try to start to assign some costs to. That was in more of a block diagram that was needed for USDA. In, in February, we began, January, February began refining that design concept to come up with a more defined cost estimate. The cost estimate that represents the needs of the fire department based upon all the dialogue with the group and with the fire department themselves. Has a fire hall project that was originally thought of at about 3.1 million back in the summer of last year. And right now is equivalently right around 3.3. We have some things that can be taken out of the project to try to reduce costs from, from that or be added back into the project depending upon what you want to do. We added FF and E budget, which is fixtures, furnishings and equipment. We did not have that number last year. We have that now. Rod has a, a list of items that, and Andy have a list of items that they feel they want to include as equipment in the fire hall. It's about $143,000. We've taken the cost estimate and looked at items that we could scale back or reduce. And so we have some of those listed on the last page of the cost estimate for those of you that are interested in going to page three. I can, we can definitely have Tom come up and talk a little bit about that too. But basically in a nutshell, we're looking for ways to get the project cost down for you and give you some options to look at. Okay?
Yep. I guess I can start with, I can show you kind of what the handout is. We didn't send it electronically ahead of time. So you have one handout, it's got the rendering. Has the floor plan of first floor and it has the mezzanine level concept. And then at the very end is an updated schedule, kind of where we're at. You don't need to go through everything completely, but it'll be for your, for your use here. As far as the budget, so last week we were here and we had a budget at that time that made it clear that that was higher than, than wanted. So we went back and we took another look at it. And we pulled out as much as we could as far as, and still having a functioning building of the same floor plan size that matches, essentially matches what the drawings show now. So basically the budget you have in your hand is what these two floor plans show. The mezzanine area, jumping around here a little bit, but the, the mezzanine area has been scaled back. That's an option for an alternate. But anyways, let me take you to the last page of the buzz, with budget with the orange, yellow areas. So I'll actually go up, up above here. Our total project budget's about 3.3 million right now, based on these plans. The, if you go up a few more, you'll see total construction cost is at 2.85. And that's a cost per square foot around $211 for a precast building. So the, the total project budget, again, back here at 3.3 million, taking out the FF and E gets to around a 3.15, which is, you know, very close to the original, what we perceived as the approved budget for the project. So however, down here, the list of additions in the yellow area again would need to be added to the total budget. So essentially these would be added to your, your construction budget. And then there might be some increases in some percentages as far as contingency and design because that's based on the cost of construction. So first, am I going too fast or does anybody have any questions with anything?
I do have one question. So you said take out the FF and E, what is, what is FF and E again? I apologize.
Fixtures, furnishings and equipment. So that would be like geared, geared washers, tables and chairs, things like that. The furniture, fixtures, furniture.
So that was something you said.
Some technology.
Technology?
This, this stuff, this stuff is listed as FF and E as well, fixtures, furnishings.
You said, then we'd be 3.1? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, essentially, it would be about 3.15, you know?
I'm just, I want to just understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the exact, that's an exact number from Rod? Or was it Andy that gave us that? I don't have that handout with me. I think Maggie probably have it from last week.
Yeah, it was in another pack.
Wanted to look at that. So it has, has a number of things of furniture, kind of anything that will shake loose if you were to shake your building up, tip it over, all the stuff that falls out. Like this would be FF and E here, these chairs, dust and blinds.
Blinds would be too, yeah.
So. So moving on to the list of additions, which are some things that we had pulled out of the project because we're being told heavily that the project is over budget. So let's see what we can do without shrinking the building at this point. There was, last week there was a request about kitchen cabinets, essentially taking that out. So the plumbing would still be in there, but if you wanted to, right now at this point, not put in kitchen uppers or lowers or a countertop. Right now, if you wanted to add it in, it would be an additional $10,000. We, we typically provide a fully adhered EPDM 60 mil roof.
Rubber roof.
Is what we typically do. However, it is about three to four, three to $4 a square foot more roughly. So we took a look at changing that to a ballast roof, which is rock on top of a membrane that holds the membrane down. So there's less labor there. It's not, not as easy to find a leak, but however, it still meets the same warranties. And that is an option. The overhead door upgrades right now, basically if you wanted to go to a larger track system, not a big cost here, but adding about $1,000 a door. Right now, we've got that plugged in there at that. The next item, adding carpet into the offices, day room, kitchen and storage. So essentially right now, we, we took it down to a sealed concrete. Again, just going off the requests of what can we get by? What can we do? And a sealed concrete is, I don't know if we had anything here, but it's essentially a slab poured and finished. And then there is a sealer application. It's not, not the curing compound, but it's a sealer. And it hardens the top. I believe like eighth inch of the concrete makes it a hard surface and, and you'll be able to clean it easy. Next item would be from, changing from sealed concrete and going up to epoxy flooring in some of these areas, SCBA and gear grid. That runs, can be somewhere between seven and nine dollars a square foot. Next item was adding a flagpole. I'm not sure, I guess we don't show it in the rendering, but we typically have three. So it may not be a need or a want at this point, but that's, that's what one of them would cost.
Something you could add at a later date too, of course, right?
And the next item is the adding in the fire sprinkler system. So you would, you would assume this building would need one, but it technically doesn't need one. However, it could be a political thing or you may want to have that in. Essentially doesn't need it. Corey can probably talk more about the code and why that's not needed.
The building is considered a non-combustible building, so the building itself can't burn down because the structure is all concrete. Only the contents can burn. So technically the building code allows a facility much larger than that to be constructed without it being fire sprinkled. So with that being said, we could certainly build it without one. Could it be added later? Yes, it could be. You could bring the service into the building and line flange it right at the floor and, and add that if you wanted to in the, in the future. That could be done.
Any questions so far?
Yeah, does that sprinkle like the whole building or is it just the?
The whole building.
The next item in line there after fire sprinkling is, we initially had a 5% contingency. And reducing that down to 3%, essentially keeps the total contingency at about $85,000. Gear grid lockers, we're not sure if that, that would be something you buy at a later point or not. That's kind of a fixture, FF and E item. However, we usually, we can put it in the project or not in the project. So it's currently not.
I don't know what it is.
That's where they put their turnout gear and they hang it in there to dry.
Oh.
They're lockers, essentially open lockers so that their, their clothing can air out and detox. So you look right about here on the plan, you'll notice that. So there's, the bottom three there we thought would make some good add alternates. Keeping budget in the main focus here. So item one is adding the vehicle exhaust system. I think last week someone mentioned a exhaust for, that's a standalone on the vehicles. I don't know if you ever found anything out on that at all or?
I didn't look into the cost.
Okay. Okay. So about the same. So that's an exhaust system that would take the vehicle truck exhaust out through the roof.
Let me speak a little bit to that. So technically according to the mechanical code, exhaust vehicle systems, we have to have the ability to get exhaust out of the building at a control, at a constant rate once a certain level of parts per million is met. So we put a detector system in that can monitor the ambient air in the room. And once it hits that, it turns on air locking fan systems and louvers that open up and pull fresh air in the building. That's what we call, and don't take this wrong, but that's what we call the four man system. It's a system that meets the requirements of the, of the, but is not the system that everybody is, is wanting in their fire halls these days. Nowadays, it depends on the station where you go, but a lot of times we want point of capture. So point of capture means that basically we try to put a device on the truck where it hooks on to the exhaust pipe and grabs the point of the capture, the point of the exhaust, and takes it into a system of pipes and pumps it straight outside. What it allows you to do in the middle of winter, which is nice, is turn the trucks on while the doors down. So it's an energy thing. You're not wasting so much energy by, by having the doors open so you don't get, you know, carbon dioxide poisoning.
So the firefighters are getting their gear on in the bays where the trucks are?
Where do they get their gear on is really relevant to this piece right now. But it's really the, when they're doing truck checks and they're working on the vehicles, checking to make sure the chainsaw works and the K-12 saw that they use to cut through about anything, you know, they got to do that every month. When they train, you know, when they do get into the vehicle, a lot of times they have their gear on, but your gear does not really stop you from getting potential carcinogens in your system, especially around your neck. And thyroid cancer is one of the number one cancers that firefighters get because we sweat from the neck and we have these nomax hoods around our neck all the time. And so the more we grab a hold of those exhaust particulates that are known to be cancer products, grab a hold of them and suck them out, the less chance we, the less exposure we have to those elements.
So is this something that gets taken off of the exhaust then?
Yep.
Like when you're done?
Well, what happens is, what's, what happens is, is they stay on the, they stay on the vehicle until the vehicle goes through the door and trips a sensor and then they let go. And a lot of times they're magnetic and so they're hooking onto a plate on the exhaust pipe or they are a balloon that is, oh hey, suck the air out, let go, and so it lets go. So they're trolleying systems. They actually trolley with the vehicle to the point before it gets to the point where then it leaves the building. Companies like Plumevent up in Plymouth make them, MagnaGrip. There's a number of different companies out there that make these systems. With cancer awareness right now within the fire department, it's the number one topic. You can't go anywhere and have a seminar on being a firefighter and trying to recruit people without being conscientious about how bad the cancer is in the departments. And so it's, it's one of those things that we can do to try to reduce the exposure to cancer within the firefighters.
So the exhaust system that we had in place there, I guess it was my understanding that it was better, of course, than what we have now. And that was taking care of this issue. That's not the case?
It's, it's better than you have now, but the best system is this system to be point of capture. Makes sense?
Okay. That was add alternate number one. If you go to add alternate number two, that's for the emergency generator if required or, or needed. It's not, not needed.
It's not required by code, but if you want it, it's $130,000, of which about $26,000 is the switchgear systems that are part of electrical rollover. The rest of it is the generator itself.
And then last down there would be alternate number three. We heard from the group that storage is key on this project. And so that'd be essentially, if you look at the second handout, handout with the second mezzanine floor plan. We've currently reduced the, the mezzanine area down significantly. So what this would be, would be to add in 1,500 square feet of mezzanine deck area. That would be just the deck area for, for storage and things like that and a railing if needed. So that's about.
So the goal, again, the goal of looking at these items was to give you some, some things to, to evaluate, prioritize, whatever you want to call it. In order to support moving forward with a project, we would like to have some feedback on some of those items if possible sooner than later. We're, we have a schedule, proposed schedule that we'd like to go through next. It outlines. Talk schedule a little bit. Oh yeah, if you have any questions on the budget, certainly ring those up.
Any, any questions so far what we've got? One, I think it's good. I'm, one somehow Maggie, we need to get this stuff in front of us sooner. It's hard to go through it for us to review it ahead, you know, while we're here. So let's, on these kinds of things, we, we need to try to get these in front of us sooner. But I'd like to see on these sorts of things, we could kind of redline from where we were, you know, went from 3.2 to possibly 4.2 and then now down to 3.7. And I'm not sure what got cut where, you know? If I could see, you know, which line item, you know, keeping the same document, but knowing which line items changed, that's helpful for me. But we can work through that stuff. Just a couple of comments. And again, I've made, I, I attended the meeting last week for the first half hour or so, 45 minutes. One, I think we need to come to some sort of agreement and get it on a council meeting on what are we going to do, you know? So we can continue to move forward. What's the right amount of money? Where do we want to be with this? And then at least make some decisions. So I think we have to come to some conclusion. We may not and likely won't have a 5-0 vote and that's fine. We don't need that. We need a, a majority to vote on something. So I think we do owe it to the committee to kind of have an idea of what, where we're at budget wise. I think we should make that decision.
I just have a couple of comments. Okay, so we've already did the phase one. I want to go on the engineering. I don't think it, but like what we, because we made, we did phase one and we made that payment, correct? $68,000 and then now we're in phase two, right? I think you gave this to us. I'm sorry that I didn't.
It's all right.
You know, like you gave us the different phases and like, okay, well, you approved phase one. It's not in here. What I'm just trying to get to is, I'm willing to get to a certain part because we've already invested this much time and energy. And I think the, the final decision is the bids. Because this is, these are your estimates. This isn't final, right? And I agree going through this list, and I wasn't at the last meeting. I'm not comfortable at 4 million. I'm not comfortable with tying up all that debt for our city for the next 30 years. So I like that we're getting back to that original number. I kind of was on board with the three and agree with the taxpayer implementations. It just, to me at the last meeting, an, an extra million was quite a shock. And it was just really hard to absorb. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I'm not saying anything negative. I'm just saying.
No, I'm just, I just want to explain one thing. I know if you read your, and it's in product here, they forgot it's at 3.5. And if you use the 4 million as far as doing the.
Financing.
Finance. Correct.
So that $500,000 is where everybody jumped at.
Yeah, but technically if you look at this bottom line here, this 4 million 60 or 469 million dollars, that, that's, that's still the million.
469,000.
469,000.
Oh, to add on to the.
Half a million to add into the.
Yeah, so now we're at a different number. I mean, that's the whole, the whole thing is, we don't know what it's going to cost. You're, you guys have the best guesses, but we don't know what, what construction companies are going to give because we don't know what their environment's going to be and the timing. And we talked about timing of the project and things like that. It could come under, it could come over. You know, COVID throws a huge other wrench in it. I just, can you explain what these phases, like how much more of your fees we're going to incur until we can get to the bidding process? Because that's going to be the final decision in the end is the, the number.
So if I can address that Nikki, so are you, so we've gone, we've gone through the schematic design piece, which is, you guys are calling it and claiming it phase one and that's fine. The next step of the design process is to incorporate more detail into those production plans. And that's called design development. We internally, we call it DD, right?
Right.
The, the next, the next step of, of development in the plans is the, is the construction drawing, which include the specifications, all the drawings. the, the specifications and all the drawings and every time we, uh, every time we, we go from one phase to the next, we're actually dealing with smaller and smaller issues to, to drill down on the design so that put together a set of plans that we're not gonna have a ton of change orders on, okay? So, uh, your comment about being comfortable to, you know, since you've, you've gotten through phase one and you're willing to move forward and you wanna know what the next phase is, what I would advise you on is, uh, either that, that you, that you allow us to explain the schedule and our thoughts on that for one, that you, that you understand that we go through, we, we do dozens and dozens and dozens of these buildings and this is our best estimate as to what we think we can carve out of it and what we think this thing is gonna cost. But you mentioned the COVID thing. That's a little bit of a wild card. There's no doubt. We are pretty good at estimating and estimating tight is super hard. Estimating loose, super easy. Shit, four and a half million, you guys got a five million dollar project here. I could stand here and tell you that. Reality of it is it doesn't, doesn't help you, does it? We've gotta tell you exactly what we think we can get this thing down to and we are pressing down as hard as we can. I can't do that until I spend more time with the rest of these design teams, the civil engineers, mechanical engineers, the plumbing engineers, the structural engineers and find, continue to find opportunities to get the construction costs down. Just going to the next phase, I feel would be potentially unuseful or not as useful to you. Because we, we can't afford to go backwards.
No, I wasn't, all I was saying is we've invested a lot of money with you guys.
Yes, you're ready to move forward.
Yeah, so like let, let's get to a spot because we can't make a decision until the final.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. Okay.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not trying to backtrack anywhere. I'm not trying to say you've, we've spent too much.
Yeah.
We're, we're in, I just wanted to voice my concern is that when we came to that four million number, that scared me.
Yeah.
It, it's a big number. I mean, a million dollars more and we're a town of twenty-two hundred people and one of the smallest towns in Carver County. So I'm just trying to understand like, okay, we're already in thi, that's why I think it's important that I wanna be like, okay, we've already spent this.
Yeah.
Cause it is, it is a money thing. Is that part, I just wanna know, is that part of this two twenty-eight that we've already, is that what, in the end is what we would pay?
Yes, yes, that's exactly right.
Yep, so.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I misunderstood where you're, where you're going with it Nikki and.
Yeah, and I didn't want you, yeah, it wasn't a negative. It was more just trying to understand that like, when, you know, how this is after the final, so then we make the final pay, you know, like, I'm just trying to understand.
This is kinda like buying a new car, right? So here's this base sticker price of the car with the,
Right.
with the two point oh liter turbo in it. And down here, this is all the add-ons for the car, right? So that's kinda what this is.
So you need from us what things we could say, take out so you can move on with the, the phase.
Essentially decisions, yeah, would need to be made at this point based on these items here.
That's certainly what the committee needs and what they're gonna need.
And.
And assuming we're at agreement to that's where we're gonna be and, I mean, that's where we're gonna have to get to a council meeting and make sure we, so everyone can move forward. Uh, we do need to get there.
And I totally agree with that. And Mike, in, in your defense, um, we didn't have this document ready until uh, late, probably Thursday, Friday. So we, we didn't, we didn't have this ready for you to look at, cause we've, we've been trying to rack our heads and talk to the other team members in the project about, hey, what can you do? What can we look at that you could bring to the table to help save costs? So with that being said, but however, none of these decisions right now need to be made today.
Okay.
So you actually have a couple of weeks to mull these over if you want. If your next city council meeting, you could mull them over and make a yea or nay on one, do a vote if you want. I don't care. That would be helpful and we can continue to move forward um, so that we can unveil the construction true costs that we're gonna see. Can, if I can step in, do you have any more questions about the, the minutia of the, of the budget or the, the detailed budget right now?
Without, um, the papers in front of me, what was the initial, what was the initial estimate?
So last summer?
Yeah.
Uh, last summer, and that was based off kind of a block diagram. It was three point one. And that did not.
F, FF fee though.
That's right, yep. Thank you. Yep, and that did not have FF fee in it. And so if, if you add a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand, it'd be three point two five. We're three three.
I mean, for me, I know that it's never gonna be just like three point one million, you know, but my thing was going from one point to the other.
Six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. It, it went, it went up. If I'm doing the math right now, finally that I figure out how to look at this thing. Okay, so why wouldn't we, if we, I think we all want to try to move on, move forward and at least get some bids and see what's going on. Why wouldn't we just get bids with all of this? And then start saying, no, that's horrible and pick it back?
Well, my understanding is you can.
And then if the bids come in high and we decide not to, where have we gotten? So what do we have to go all the way back to the drawing board again? You know, when the bids come in, then what?
Well, and I.
So that's where some of my concern and I, I, I do have a concern and I'll vo, and I'll voice my concern now, uh, with, with the amount of money we're spending on this. Uh, kinda to Nikki's point. Me personally, I almost need to see it at two point five million or two for a project.
Are you saying all in?
For the entire project.
A million dollars off of.
Yep. That's kinda where I am right now. I mean, we, to get into a debt situation and close to our max debt, I can't support that from where we are and getting close to our max and, and setting future councils up for, uh, not sitting financially. So I have a problem with that. I have a problem with it being two times over our op, our operating budget's one point nine million. And that's one project. We get a million dollars off, think of what we could do for this community. We could do every park project we have. We could, that million would've paid for what we're just doing for the water tower stuff. We have other public work stuff we need to do. There's a lot that million can do for this community. I've talked before, I thought we've done this project backwards and something's always sat with me. It's, it's been done backwards. I almost think what we should've done from the very beginning is said, here's our budget, two point five or two million or three or four or five, eight million, whatever it is, build us a station. We have the needs that we need to meet to get this new station. I think everyone's in agreement, we need a new station. And I'm absolutely in agreement, we need a new station. We need to fix some things. We need to fix safety. We need to get some showers so they can, uh, for the carcinogens. We need to get the diesel out of those machines and we need a separate area for the scuba. We take those items. We just have to make sure we address them. Now, we build the station. Long as those needs are addressed, that's what we need and the space. And to go up almost two and a half sizes of this building that we have now seems, seems excessive and more than we need. I, I, I need to be around two and a half. I need, that's how I think the process should've, I think, I think we need to come to a conclusion on our next session. What, what do we think we should be spending? And kinda have a rough idea. And if it's this number, it's this number. Go ahead. Say again?
The three point one number was, was kinda where we started all this at.
Yep. Who's we?
So.
You guys and a few people who we, there, there wasn't city council discussions on it. It was all done. Here's what we, and it, so that's what I mean, it was done not, and that's nothing to you guys. Um, don't, don't get me wrong. That's an internal problem we, we had.
I think.
Process problem where everything is coming this way and it's been coming this way since twenty-ten. I mean, whatever the case was. Nobody ever sat down and identified what we needed, what the budget was. It just kept coming. It would fail. It would come back the next year. It would just kept coming back. We never worked together on this thing.
Yeah, nothing you guys have done. That's an internal problem we had.
You know, I mean, if the city identifies the fact that we need to have a project, then we all need to work together. Not keep coming, coming back and coming back and coming back. And that's what this thing feels like is it keeps coming back. It keeps getting bigger and nobody's communicated. We've talked about in the past few meetings that the fire administration wasn't talking with the, um, with the, with the building committee. The fires, the administration and the, the committee hasn't been communicating to the, um, to the city administrator. There's no communication. So that's where, that's, that's what we need to fix.
And I'm afraid if we stick with a building like this and it does come in at three point eight and, and say, then it fails, but then what? Then we start all over again and lose two years and okay, let's go back through. So I, I think we gotta re, we gotta kinda get a number where we need to be and wanna be and, and come to an agreement and move forward then on that. And, and however that building should, may look. But if council comes back and says, and, and I'm using these numbers and they say, nope, two point five, then the, then the, then it goes to the building committee and say, hey, you got two point five, guys figure out what you need to do. It means you cut out those extra bays. We cut them out. Cut out the tower, cut it out.
I think.
Find a different way to dry the hoses. I mean, that's just what we'll have to do. We don't need that extra space right now. We can blow a wall out in ten years and you've, you've said that that's fairly simple to do. Let's get rid of that empty space. We have nowhere, do we have any, any talk of adding any apparatus? So we, what do we need it for? I mean, it's those kinds of things where I think we did it. I think we did it. And it's always been bothering me and I couldn't figure it out, but I, that's what it is.
So I, I agree. I, I agree that some of this, this, the process went very backwards and there was lack of communication and things could've gone way differently. I think also too, like, can't change the past. And I know it's frustrating and, but it, and it's kinda like we, this is where we're at. And it's like, can, do we wanna s, you know, I think along the way, like, I'm hoping, okay, this is where we are. What can we do to keep moving forward? If we feel like a, I, I, I'm feeling like there's a consensus that we need to fix this problem and that we need to, move ahead with a project, but, and I think that's like at the last building committee meeting, I really, I think there was some strong, like some tension there, like because there was a, some strong arguments about, you know, what, what are we gonna do to get this project to one, meet the needs, but then also bring it back, you know, for our financial reasons. And I, and I think this is a really good, good start. And I think, um, but I think also we need to be realistic to, um, cause we did talk about what would different materials be? You know, how would that bring down the cost? But if you, if you change one thing, then you have to add in another thing and it just kinda throws things off. And, you know, it's like there's, you're eliminating one cost somewhere, but then you're adding another cost somewhere else. So is it, it's kind of a, some, in some instances, a wash. So I, I think moving forward, um, I, I real, I really think that if, if we wanna get it down to where you're saying, it would have to be cutting square footage.
Absolutely. No, and I think.
I mean, and that's, that's something like, but there's, I, I think there would have to be a discussion. What are the pros and cons? Like, are we gonna meet the needs for the next ten years or are we gonna, are we gonna try and meet the needs for the next?
Well, we can always.
You know, and I, yeah, and that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. And.
So that's where I think we need to get. And if, if the decision is, hey, we keep the building as is and council, it, and that's what we wanna do, so be it. I'll get on board with that. I'll vote no at first, but once I do that, but I'll get on board with this. I, we do need, but I don't, I can't support that right now.
I think we all can agree that, yes, we do need a fire station. Yes, we do need to move forward.
I think everyone, yep.
Yeah, so I think, in my opinion, I think our next move is, let's come up with a top-end budget, not to exceed X amount, and we move forward from there because in looking at what we have here, I mean, we're getting quoted anywhere between, depending on what we pick and choose, two hundred and fifty-six dollars a square foot to two hundred and ninety-three dollars per square foot, which exceeds every single example that you have given us in our packet where it's like two sixty-one a square foot to fifteen, one forty.
That's the projects, those are the ones, the project costs. And I think, um, we talked about that at the building committee meeting too, is one thing you have to be aware of is some cities put in extra costs for, and, and, cause we had the same questions.
If I'm looking here at Crokato, you know, fire and ambulance station, I'm looking at a hundred and thirty-nine dollars per square foot and yet my quote here is between two fifty-six and two ninety-three square.
Well, Crokato's a different building.
So some of the parking lot, some of the, like, say the parking lot lives for that Crokato one, might've went into their street budgets and not part of the project. So that's where some of that. Cause I thought the same.
And the Crokato one is like a full one. Like it's not the same con, uh, material.
Yeah, but I'm, you know, I'm, but if you look at all these, you know, Kenyon, all those things, I mean, they're all different floor plans. They're all different layouts.
They're all different sizes too.
Right, exactly.
There's the economy of scale. I think.
Yeah, and they, and, and we talked about using Crokato as an example and, but then we ran into, you know, even since building that building, there's been code changes that have gone into effect that would essentially take, it, cause I, I pushed, challenged them to consider that option, but then it's like you change the outside, but then there's a new code that passed this year that says you have to have a sort, like a certain square footage of a storm shelter, which is concrete. And that, you know, you have to make that in, an internal thing then, and then that adds extra costs, whereas if you just keep it.
For today's conversation, that is, you know, kind of irrelevant. I think what we need to figure out is what's our top end that we're willing to spend.
So I have, I have a potential solution, if I may. So the, the, the consensus is that we're uncomfortable about the uncertainty of what the bids could come in at. Fair statement, okay? We've identified a, a list of items that we can already identify in, in the project to make sure that we can get it to a certain level, but we, we're not done. We can, we can take sections of paving out of the project too and, and make some of that gravel. We can, we can take a bay, which is actually two bays by the way, you take two bays off by simply drawing a line around it and say deduct for this area. Then it includes all the electrical, the HVAC, the footings, foundations, the concrete slab and the trench string, just like that. I can do that. If you wanna know what two bays cost, it's that times two. I mean, we don't have to go back to the drawing table. I know the comment was made about, I know the comment was made about, well, hey, what if, what if we did the, what if we made this a pre-engineered metal building? One, you'd save about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the construction of it based upon the fact that the shell of a building is about twenty percent of its total budget. You take, you'd never get a shell for free. Nobody's gonna give you a pre-engineered metal building for free. It's about seventy percent of the value. You save about thirty percent on the total cost of the shell. So you do the math on, it's about a hundred, a hundred and fifty grand. But we gotta start over and redesign. So our sixty, because of the pre-engineered metal building and the way they're, they're built and what they can and can't do is a whole different animal. We gotta start over. So it, you, you wouldn't be a hundred and fifty. You'd be at best seventy, eighty, maybe ninety at the most back into it. It's not worth it. We still have to address the storm shelter pieces and all that. I would recommend council, for the next council meeting, looks at these lists and say, yes, we're good with that. And Corey, give us two bays as an alternate. We know what it costs so that we're protected. So we can at least, we can at least award a project or keep moving, knowing that if we can only afford, uh, seven bays and we gotta put a boat somewhere else, then that's what we gotta do. Right now, I will tell you that they have nine apparat, they have nine vehicles. We have nine bays. We don't have ten bays. We don't have twelve bays. We got nine bays. So if they're not gonna have, uh, all nine bays, they're gonna have to move something somewhere.
When has that changed? We had, we had, that's not true. Where, where, where's this misinformation?
Yeah, we had an extra.
There was room for growth. I remember that.
We have no.
Well, the, the boat was gonna occupy a bay is what I was in the understanding of.
What he's saying is there is nine apparatus. That's including the boat.
Yeah, which is what I just said.
Could not, or, you know, we can tighten it up, put it in, you know, smaller.
We had empty, we had empty things in there because we're talking about.
One, one bay.
It was, it was, but too long, double wide.
Nope, just.
You guys had a picture of a ladder truck sitting in there. Yeah, yeah, come on.
It was only part of it.
Yeah, it was empty with like a, with a.
Well, I think the thing is, is we can't afford a four million dollar building.
No, yeah.
Or I can't, I can't get on board.
There was one truck here, but then it showed an option for a future one of, one of these calls, not two of them.
Well, I mean, either way, like, I like what you said, that, that we have options still. And I think we need to come to a number or at least an idea of what people are most comfortable with, because I can't, I can't set up other councils to, to, to financially ruin a city over one project. We just can't afford it. It's not because we don't want it. We just can't afford that type of project.
I agree with, like, I, I know at the, again, at the, um, the meeting and in your packet are alternates. And that's one of the things I push them to consider to, or the building committee to consider, is we, we keep the design of the building, but then you add in alternate. we keep the design of the building, but then you add in alternates into the bidding process. So what we can do is, I like what Corey's saying, is we can keep the bay in there, but then we can do an alternate where we take them out. So they bid it both ways. So then if we're like, we're not comfortable with the full cost, like, because it could, if we bid it out, if we bid it out and it come, like, because we don't know how it's going to bid out, if it comes in high, and then if you cut out the bays, it comes in at a price that you guys are okay with, then you can just say, yes, we approve the bid alternate without the two bays at this cost.
And I see what you're saying and I agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we're at that point then of, yeah, it's going to be another four hundred thousand. You know, I I'm looking at a million dollars less than these numbers. I'm looking, we got to change the size of it. Go from, what, fifty two hundred square feet to twelve five? That's a huge building. That's huge. Does it need to be that big? I mean, going from a two thousand square foot house, because I have a few more kids, I go up to a five thousand square foot house? Two and a half times? That's huge. I I I don't see a need for it that big and that extravagant. I see the point, Corey, when you're saying, you know, here's your car and here's your add-ons. Well, that's the difference between an Escalade and a Chevette too. I mean, add-ons to a Chevette versus an Escalade, but I just think it's too big and it's got to come down. I mean, yeah, we can cut out some things for sure. But that's where my problem is. And and to Nikki's point, yeah, we, these councils, and I explain this to the group, is since the recession, every council member, every everyone who's been involved worked hard to get out of this hole. And we're going to get right back in it now for future, and it's just not right. I don't know how we can't build a good building and satisfy our needs. Remember these needs over here that we have to satisfy and we want to satisfy. I don't know how we can't do it for two and a half to, and then maybe three.
Maggie, I know that you've been like playing around with some numbers. Have you been able to come up with a solid number based on all of the other projects that we are looking at in the next or many years that we can like feel comfortable with? I think the two is too low, but the four is too high.
Right.
But I also want to feel like if we decide to go with three five, you know, I want to make sure that that's going to be okay, like, the city's going to be okay, even if the economy goes.
Right. I think the way I look at it is, it's it's kind of what you're comfortable with. So you have a lot of debt falling off, you know, from your water, you know, like you guys did do.
What's a lot of debt, like, what's a lot of?
Well, you have.
Yeah, because we just approved on that one point, one million.
I mean, like, a lot of debt could be, is that like?
Well, it's like, I mean, we pay, well, so you, let's just say, it it's probably around, you guys pay four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt each year. You have your wastewater, your water, the these treatment plants falling off. So in the next couple of years, so you have a significant, and I I put together the numbers. I I'll have to resend it to you because it it's falling, like, there's significant debt falling off. And essentially, you'd just be replacing it entirely.
We just replaced one point one million dollars in debt tonight.
Yeah, so that's what.
Well, I mean, but that's that's sixty six thousand a year.
No, I.
So but so you're like adding it on, yeah.
No, I I get that.
So it's it's it's, I'll send you the link, I created a spreadsheet. And it shows kind of where it's like, kind of pulling off.
It's not, and it's because I know that I've seen it before, but then we didn't know some of the numbers and we weren't.
Yeah, so it just, you're kind of, if you're going to be at a similar, like, if if LG, again, if COVID doesn't affect things, which I'm hearing it won't affect LGA this year, which, I mean, for twenty twenty one. And but I mean, it's uncertain for the years after still. Like, obviously, there's lobbyists that for for the cities that are going to be pushing that LGA stays the same or keeps going up. We just don't know.
Because that's her second year.
But essentially, you're just, you're you'll maintain, I think what I see is you'll maintain your tax rate or around, you'll still be around that fifty percent, because you're you're still levying, you're going to just be replacing the debt, you're you're just seeing the same.
And I want to include the big street projects we have going on, because that's.
And the pond maintenance.
And maintenance, and now we've got the pond maintenance. So it's, I mean, we have to look at it overall budget to make sure.
And I, and I need to be able to justify to every resident and mayor why I am approving up almost four million dollar budget for a fire station. You know, which we need, and I'm not going to argue that because I know we need it. I mean, our OSHA reports totally show that.
We can't build something that we can't afford.
Exactly.
Every resident I've talked to agrees we need something.
Oh, absolutely.
That is absolutely true and.
Yep.
But every one of them can't can't stomach the the dollar amount. And what and what are we, I just think it's it's more than what's needed, but.
And I've already got people complaining about our tax rate is too high. I might disagree with that. I may or may not disagree with that. But to incur more, so I just, things are so uncertain. I know that as.
I think we're in a unique position financially with our debt falling off, that it wouldn't jump things significantly, like, we're able to wrap it. The thing is, is that I think what you guys have to, or what the council needs to realize is like, are you comfortable staying at, staying at that? Like, are you like?
If you can show me the numbers and you can include all the other projects and that we already have.
Which is what the, which is what the long term.
And I disagree with that, because even being comfortable with it, not changing our tax or doing our thing, it's still too much money to spend on this project where we, if we could cut a million, what we could do for this community. I still stand, I still stand by that. I still stand by that, so.
I really think it would be.
I think we have to decide, are we going to stay with this building? And yeah, we know we can cut a few bucks here and there and maybe even two hundred thousand, maybe four hundred thousand. Or are we going to reduce it and make some big, that's, I I think we got to come to that conclusion too. To be fair to the committee and the architects on what, we got, need to figure out what we're doing.
I think like, when I was at the building committee.
And the way to cut it, and they've said it's square footed, it's to make the building smaller.
If we, if we put the alternate in there, that can be accepted, that can help the building by two bays, just like that. I mean, and that and that's easy to do right now.
Is it reduce every room by ten percent?
No.
You know, I I mean, but is that something we can do? Again, we've gone up two and a half percent on this building.
You know, can we, you know, we got a huge meeting room, can we eliminate the day room?
You know, right.
Things like that.
Yep.
I'm not saying that's what we do, but I'm just saying, you know, just thinking like that.
I look at even, even the tower. You know, i- i- is that the best way to dry hoses? Possibly. But we can use rag, there's other ways to dry them too. I mean, there's room in this. But somewhere we got to figure out and make a decision on what we're going to do from a council standpoint and make a, take a vote on it. Are we going to move forward with this size? Are we going to not? And and move forward. We'll never get a five oh vote. I mean, we're not looking to do that. I don't think we need to do that.
One thing I want to say is that relative to our projections with the schedule, we are, we are completely a month behind schedule right now from where we want to be. In order to not miss this next wave, we can't, we can't have another delay that's a month long. We can't. We got to move forward on this in order to protect. If we're telling you that we think the best numbers we're possibly going to get on this fire station are are going to be by having it ready for bidding in October and receiving bids in November, we can't miss that, because if we miss that, the construction costs keep keep inching up on us. And they don't inch up a little, they inch up a lot.
To decide that.
Totally.
Again, it's another timeline that's on us and and keep driving to that. But we get it. There's no one up here doesn't understand, things may cost more than a lot, we get it.
And just just.
We're the decision makers and we need to make those decisions.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, just to rea.
Things that delays them.
Right.
And if it, you you can see by this conversation, we're back again to try to get more information again, where.
Well, in February, I stood in front of you guys and I made, I made the same statement, that if you don't get on the next, in this wave, it's going to go up. You said, well, okay, so then COVID hit. We still didn't, we couldn't make a decision. Here we are talking about the next wave. If we miss this wave, this isn't a small issue. This next wave, the construction costs are going to go up a lot next spring because they're not act, they're not, people aren't booking up their spring yet, but they will be in the late fall and it'll be a rush to get in the ground. And I want to be earlier than that so that we can be first in, so that people can say, hey, phew, I got my spring, because, boy, I tell you what, this fall and winter sucked. And that that's happening right now. We're getting phone calls. We probably get two to three phone calls a week from general contractors asking us what we're working on because we're the economic indicator of the market. If we're not working on stuff, nothing's coming. And they're all nervous, nothing's coming. And we're telling them, no, we're really busy. We think it's going to be good. And they're like, okay, keep us in mind. We know they're going to be hungry. So I would just, allow me to say this on the record. We really need to keep moving with this in order to have a chance to get this thing project come in at 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 the most favorable number it can possibly come in at, okay? Whatever that is. If it's lopping a bay off, including that in the alternate, that's fine. If you want us to do more, let us know. We will do the best we can at trying to get that number, but if we miss this wave, it's game over. It's it's going to be, it'll be a lot more money next year, because we'll miss the wave, okay? Any other questions for me at all? No? All right, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
We need to decide what works, everyone. We have to, again, we got to be fair to everyone and try to do what we can do. But if if we're not there and we, again, we have the financial part, we have the responsibility to the community on what we need to do, so sometimes I just. I don't need to have a special, no, I don't think I need to have a special meeting. I think it can be next council meeting.
I mean, I think one thing.
But what do we want to vote, what do we want to have to come to council? Do we want to have it continue on with this size? Do we want to reduce it? Do we want to challenge the committee to, and the architect, see what they can do to give us, what if you made it a ten thousand square foot building, what would that cost? You know, some, a couple of different things like that, or?
I would like to see what can be done at two and a half to three million dollars. What what can be done with that? You know, is it a ten thousand square foot building? Is it twelve thousand square foot, but we eliminate these rooms? I just want to see what can be done between two and a half and three.
I can get on board with that amount. I can, it's a lot of time, again, when we bid and we know, we've bidded hundreds of projects, we know where they come in and the ones we talked about today came in lower. So I mean, that's that's a positive thing. They typically are a little high on them, so and I get that, but at two and a half to three, we've we've just cut a million then. I mean, that's exactly, that's.
Are there things on this list of additions that we're thinking we absolutely don't want? Or some of them that we really should try to do then?
Mine, no, for me, there's a couple of things I'd really like to have in. For me, adding the flagpole, I think that's very important.
Absolutely.
And then the other one is the.
All the flagpoles are already there.
We don't have any, any in the design right now.
Right.
But these are things you can add on to the broad group today.
Yeah.
I call it like a generator also.
Well, that was my second one, getting the generator. I think as an emerg, you know, first responder, emergency building, it has to have the generator.
I talked to an electrical contractor and he felt he could get a generator for that station for far less than that, five thirty thousand dollars.
Good.
Yeah, I thought that was kind of high.
Can we use some of the lockers from the old station, you know, and put them into the new? Like, some of the, you know, I mean, I'm, yeah, I I'm not comfortable at four. I was way more comfortable at three.
Same here.
I think that fit better in our debt schedule. I would like Maggie to bring that.
Oh, yeah.
Spreadsheet you had back in that included all the projects and some other possible ones, so that for future councils we're making good decisions, so that we're not tied to that debt. Yes, our debt's staying the same, but that debt's now just one building and not.
Do you think, I'm just, I'm wondering if we do need a special meeting because the way that our financial CIP falls, it's on, we approved it to be, held the public hearing on August tenth for and so I guess it would be nice to come to that meeting to say, yes, we've lowered it and I'd have to talk to the financial advisor because, I mean, we're holding a public hearing for that larger amount and that, I I mean, that doesn't necessarily hurt us in any way. But if we can come, if we have residents coming to that public hearing and we can say, well, I don't know. I mean, this is what we're.
Meeting and then we'll discuss, I mean, we'll still have that discussion.
Okay.
Assuming the public hearings first, you know, first agenda item.
Typically, yeah, they're the.
Because we won't know what a new number, I mean, if we, if we had a special meeting set, everyone's agreement, hey, we want three million, you got to cut out two hundred, twenty five hundred square feet. They need time to do it. We can't, we won't have any numbers by then. For a big jump, we're going to have to cut, I mean, we we can save some here, a hundred thousand here, a two hundred, but big amounts, we're going to have to cut square footage.
I would say what's been frustrating for us is council has never told us that number that, you know what? We understand that, but, you know, let's see if we can get it for two point, get some for two point five. Not, they have never ever told us that, or communicated that, yep, we understand that, but we need it to be in, under this amount. They have never said that. They always ask what our needs were. We came to you with what we foresee our needs at. And to plan, you know, for the future, to make it a building that's going to last this city a long time. We gave you that number of three point one. Nobody ever really said anything about that number. That, you know, that's way too high, we can't do that. They never told us that. So you're waiting, you know, and now, and when stuff is starting to get right to the end, then you say, now we got to cut it to two point five? That's what is very frustrating and it's been what's been pushing this project further and further behind. You guys have said to us that it doesn't, I don't care if it ends up costing us more money as long as we do it right. That was the reasons that you were kind of making sure that everything was done right. And, you know, this, it has pushed it, the timeline back a little bit, which has escalated the costs a little bit. And now, all of a sudden, well, this is way too much money. So that's what's very frustrating.
I think, and I totally get that, I totally understand, and I think one of the reasons maybe you didn't hear a lot of pushback at the three point one is because most of us were comfortable with that. It was when it started coming in closer to four that we're like, whoa, wait a minute here. So, so I mean.
Now, we are real close to that three point one, because you guys knew at three point one that FFE wasn't in there.
Right.
You know, so with that, we are very close to that three point one mark. But now, we need to go for two point five?
I'm, I was just throwing out.
Yeah, so.
Just throwing out something out there.
This is fair.
Oh, totally.
But again, that's, it's how this project has gone backward, how how it hasn't been done right. You can say that, and I agree with what you're saying, but we got to absorb that number, we got to think about it. We had to get some financial information, we had to get, find out some other projects that were going on. We didn't know where our debt ratio was at that point. So some of that stuff just take, and I've tried to explain, it, that stuff just takes time. Now, on the flip side, I can say, well, did you ever ask what number? You can, yeah, you can say to us, hey, we never gave you, how many times did you ask me? Zero. So, I mean, that's fair too. That's a fair statement, isn't it?
Yeah.
You you have asked what it, what it would cost when we gave you those costs.
You know, so so the FFE we had to figure.
Never went any farther from that.
We still haven't talked about the hundred and eighty thousand for the lot, so that added on, that's part of this project, but it's already been paid for, but it's still part of the project. So that's where I'm at with it again, and and that's why I just don't think we had that good communication. We 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 were working in silos.
So was.
And it sucks.
Council needs to take some responsibility.
I have to say, I don't feel that.
Absolutely, we do.
I mean, I feel a lot of blame has been put on us about the whole thing, that it's been poor communication. Well, we've always, we've been giving you the numbers of what it should be at. We've never received anything reciprocating that.
Didn't gain traction. It just didn't, it didn't, and I agree with that. I don't want blame anywhere. We got to own that too. Andy, that's on us too. I agree.
I mean, I'm I'm comfortable, I was, got on board with the three point one when we had elders come in and we talked about the debt. Where I got nervous was the last meeting I was at, when it jumped a million. So that's when we just have to look back and we have to say, like, what you guys did, removing some of those things, wants and needs, and figuring out what works. So I'm okay moving forward at this for me personally, because we're this far and we know what it is. I like the idea of possibly reducing the footprint slightly to see if that adjustment, if it's not hard for the architects to do, to go out to biz, to say with this or without this. So we can just decide if that's the best measure. And if that puts us closer to that three point one and we can then have the FFE in that, that could be a win for everybody. in, in general. So, I agree, I mean, there's definitely miscommunication and not knowing, it's a big project. I mean, this isn't something that we do very often with a big pro, you know, like.
And it's, and it's, it's, it sucks for you guys, because you got five different people you gotta work, that's the problem too. You don't need five people to agree on, you know, so, we, we hear three point one million for two point five from me. Uh, Tice may be a full, I mean, every, that's the problem with it too, we've all now, in the last five minutes, have thrown out three different numbers too, so, I just think it's too big of a building and we scale it back. That's what I think, and that will get us to a, a more reasonable place, I feel.
Square footage is, you know, we're, we're at nine bays, you know, we've got, nine apparatus, the, I mean, if you, the, the boat is, is small in comparison, so it doesn't give us, you know, it isn't taking up a whole lot of room. But what you gotta take into factors, we've got that, you know, bays there, but we've got a foot around each, truck, right? To meet the kind of codes now, take all that square footage around each truck, that adds up quite a bit. You know, to cut it down, now it's getting it back into an area that we are. You know, we don't have quite that room that you want or need around each thing.
That doesn't fit our needs then, so we can't go down too small, because then we got these needs over here, we have to solve, and that doesn't solve, so I, yeah, we.
Just because you cut down two bays doesn't mean you still try and shove in all the apparatus in there. I mean, who's to say that in a year or two, you throw up a pole barn and, in the wintertime, that's where you put the.
Well, the, the one extra, you know, the one extra bay, we have talked about, you know, uh, is Ridgeview being a possibility of, of parking in there, which is a very beneficial to the city, is having an ALS ambulance in the city, you know? So, having that gives that room for that to happen.
I'd just like to say something real quick, to just, I mean, you know, obviously realize that we're getting a lot of, um, paying for our buck with the interest rate being so low. So, you know, trying to get in and out as quick as we can, so inflation doesn't hurt us, maybe around this COVID is gonna help us with a good low bid, plus low interest rate, you know, and honestly, if you be looking at this same project and paying four percent compared to paying two percent, you know, you can spend a lot more upfront there, so keep that in mind too, when you're kind of doing math. Because I don't think, I don't know how you can necessarily say this amount of money is too much, because, you know, I don't know what you get for X amount of dollars, you know what I mean? Maybe, maybe two point five is like, you get such a tight building and you're not meeting all your needs and, you know.
And I want to support that, again, we got needs, I one hundred percent wanna support and make sure we meet.
On a city project going from two and a half to three point one or something like that, isn't even worth talking about, when you're talking about a city in the gold, our city's not stagnant.
Right.
You know, you got the budget, but it's increasing constantly. How many new, uh, commercial businesses been going up here lately? That tax reference come in, I pay twenty grand for myself at my shop, not all to the city.
Right.
But my tax bill is twenty grand. So, there's income coming and more coming into the city. So, this project is not out of your realm of your comfort zone, it, it, it's a main stay for your city.
Yeah, but we need to see the numbers to feel comfortable with that.
I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think you're gonna find out that it's.
But that's still debt ratio, it's still debt ratio.
Three point one.
Yep. Still debt ratio, that we need to watch and can't exceed and, and can't set up other, other, you know, again, we got the, financial part of it that, that we have to deal with too.
So, the good news is, is obviously, we are all in agreement that we're gonna move forward. And it's not like, you know, we all agree that we need this fire station and we're gonna move forward with it, I think, the disagreement is on the amount of money, and for my part, I do wanna apologize for, any holdup, any, anything that, you know, has caused any frustration with you guys. I, I, that was never my intention. This has been a project that's been going on for almost ten years, and I think, and none of us, I don't think, have really been here this whole time. Okay, Mike has, um, with a little lapse, but he's been here. So, I, I think there's just, you know, a lot of starting and stopping and just, the flow wasn't there, and I, I apologize, and I, you know, I appreciate your frustration very much, so.
Started ten, so I have been there.
Okay, okay, good.
Wasn't supportive up until this last year. So, that's why, you know, you keep seeing it come back. You never had a council that was willing to support it and go, you really need this, I get this, I see it now.
Yep.
But until, until you had a council that's. And that's why I think that when it kept coming back, it was kind of like a half-hearted response to come back, it's like, alright, we're just gonna try and push this one more time, and they're gonna say no. Right, and I totally get that, I, the same, I would feel the exact same way. But now, you know, but when it came in front of this council and we were serious about it, I think it just kinda, the flow just wasn't there that should have been there, because of.
Because we are nurses and scientists and, you know, we're just normal people, this is not what we do for a living.
Right.
We just kinda do the best for the city.
Yep.
I'm glad that we're all on board.
Mm-hmm.
For the most part, and we'll meet in the middle and just try to keep going forward like Maggie said, and.
Yep, agreed.
Stop going backwards. Can't live in the past.
Right.
Right. I think we owe it to the committee to make a decision.
The way it happened, happened and.
Are we gonna continue on with what we have here and hope we can get it to a number that we all like, or, we wanna, and we gotta come to that conclusion so they, so they can move forward.
Right.
And if it's this one, it's this one. I mean, if, if, if it's, we get a majority vote, that's how it is. And I'll get on board, I'll get on board with it.
You're having that bond hearing on August eleventh. You know, do we have what we need, uh, for that, for that all to happen, so we can keep the project moving, or, what needs to be done in that meantime?
That I believe we do, because that's just a matter of, hey, we might spend four point one million dollars, are you guys cool with it? Come in if you're not. Right?
Come in if you are.
And come if you are, yeah, come support it, if that's, if you're all for it, yeah. So, I, I don't think we need anything more than that. Now, well, we can let them know, you know, at that point, we think, you know, we're doing everything to get it down, and we, we feel, we, went high on that, so we could keep it moving and do the, uh, the public hearing, but.
I'd say to be fair to them, I mean, is there, what options, do they need to look at, if any yet, from what you have here, before next meeting or anything?
Of these yellow ones?
Yeah, I mean, is, is there any more than this, that he, they've given you tonight, that we, you know, they'd like them to look at to, change or, or cut?
I would like, personally, I would like to see, um, adding a flagpole and a generator, however you can get that generator put in there. And I would like to see what the cost would be if we, um, maybe cut out one office and the day room.
I mean.
And this is where you're gonna get five different answers.
Yeah.
Five different answers again.
So, I mean, to be, adding those two out, and we were probably ain't gonna change the square footage of the, of the building really much, I mean, you could take that out of there, that office, I mean, that little bit of wall here and there, doesn't.
Right.
Internally, it's not a lot, but it's.
Correct.
I mean, it's, and that's the problem with not seeing, I haven't seen this, I haven't gone through it yet, so now I'll have a different answer next week, when I, when I take it home with me now, and I can finally review it. But if we're at three point three total project, we've just put in a hundred and tw- thirty thousand dollar generator, now we're up to three, four, a flagpole.
But he said he can get the generator.
Well, no, and I understand that, but going off these numbers we have in front of us, but, so you're gonna get five different answers, but I think there should be a generator in it. A, a fire suppression system, I'm up, I don't know yet.
I think maybe at the, I don't know, like, maybe at the next meeting, we need to just go, item by item and have a vote per item. I don't know, unless, like, cause I feel like otherwise, like, we're not gonna get a consensus on every single.
That's where we're gonna get down to a hundred thousand, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, we're not gonna have a big enough savings, I don't think, without square footage. I don't know how we do it.
I just liked Cory's idea. I know that nobody wants to get rid of bays, but, just kind of reducing that footprint slightly and doing bids that way.
And then knowing that we can add on later if we need to.
And what from inside can shrink up, then to not do the, you know, what can happen inside, I mean, can that square footage shrink some? I don't know where we are at square footage from bay versus the entire building, and, and again, I know I keep coming back to the tower, and maybe that's not a lot, but that's one piece that I, I, you know, maybe that can't go. But what can we do?
It serves multiple purposes versus.
I understand, yep, but, but from what I'm hearing, none of those are on our needs list. They don't solve any of that, they didn't, they didn't make more space between the bay, you know what I mean? So, that's, that's where I'm getting hung up on some of the.
We can afford everything we want, so how do we? I, I, I think we just have to get creative, and it might be like, yeah, I really, 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 really wanted that hose tower, but, that's another one that we could dry the hoses like we're doing now, and, yeah, don't have the training, because I know you guys can use it for training, I don't know, I mean, I mean, no, I'm not an architect, I'm not a designer, but I think, it's clear that four is too high, three point one is close, and this is at three point three or three point seven. And I know we're, now we're talking pennies, but, you know, there's some options. I mean, we're in a good spot, I mean, this isn't a negative, this is, like, where do we get, I mean?
Yeah, it's not like we were proposed six million.
You raising your hand?
So, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing that, that, that if we can get this, if we get the project pared down a little bit square footage, why it finds deficiencies, try not to do apparatus bays, but all, but always have the apparatus bay as an alternate, so that we're ready for it. If I can get the project down in square footage by making some internal adjustments and sacrifices with space, which is gonna result in some direct conversations to produce it. We, uh, we think that there might be an opportunity to get it down to as, at least fifty nine square feet, less than where it is. Gets it closer to the, to the eleven thousand square foot mark, rather than twelve seven or twelve five. That would be roughly about two hundred and forty thousand dollars in total cost, taking a three three down to a three oh five or three.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay? So, if we all, if we all can agree that that is, uh, that you'd like me to strive for that.
Yeah, I, I would be, for me personally.
Require sacrifices, no doubt about it.
Right, but, I mean, that's what you have to do when, when you're buying a car or buying a house, like, you're, or you're never gonna get every single thing you want.
Right.
And does it solve our problem in a price range that works for, for us?
So, if I do that, how much support do we have for that? Is, is that a five, a five oh open, just, I'll support that, can you get it down to, you know, three, three, three oh five, somewhere around there? And that, keep in mind, it still could come in ten percent less than that with competitive bidding process, but I can't miss this waiver, we're screwed.
I can get on board with that.
Yeah, I can get on board, I just need Maggie to get me a better idea.
But sort of my job.
Correct.
My job is to sit down with the department, figure out ways to make that work. If I can do that, then if we're closer to the three million dollar mark than we are to the three three, do I have support?
Yeah, I would, I'm supportive of that.
Hard to say, I mean, I gotta see the numbers. Two nine, yep.
So, you're at a two nine, but not three? Haven't, 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 two nine, haven't, haven't, three, I really don't know how to do that. Alright, but, let me try to do that, okay? And let me see what I can come up with, with that in mind. Again, I'm gonna continue to try to find ways to save money on the project there. This isn't our last stop, and this isn't, you know, that's just not the way this works. But, I gotta encourage you to not spend more money on other wishless things. You know, in regards to the generator thing, a lot of departments will provide the ability for, but the ability to plug in a, a remote generator. Other companies that, or other cities have gotten generators from the, uh, U, uh, not USDA, but the, Department of Government.
Homeland Security?
Huh?
Homeland Security.
Homeland Security.
Homeland Security, and they give them away. You know, there's things like Wyndham, you got a free generator, as an example, so, you know, there's some of those potential opportunities that don't have to impact our project if you're trying to be resourceful. If I can have permission to do that with the team and come back, I'll do that. I need, they need the space they need, you guys need to be more comfortable with it, I'm trying. Let me take a stab at that. Fair enough?
Yep.
Alright. Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
And again, sorry for any misunderstandings and frustrations on my part, so.
It's all good, it's all part of the job. We're gonna start design right now.
Do you wanna go join as part of the committee?
We table the rest.
No, it's just if you want, if they're meeting, do you need to go join?
Who can we? We can table the rest of this, can't we?
Um.
You need, this CARES Act, we have to.
I, I would like a little direction on CARES Act, I mean, we can, straight projects plan, we can put off. Huh?
Okay, go ahead.
You can't. You're, yeah, it's more, I just, no, not decision, I just want to give you, um, some, some information to bring to the next council meeting. Um, so, just really quick, so, you know, we're getting CARES Act funding. Um, I think you've all heard about the, you know, that this is part of the, um, Economic Security Act. So, with that, we're, our, based on the algorithm, we're gaining a hundred and seventy, about a hundred and seventy-two thousand in funding. And so, we did, um, I think we will be getting that probably in August. Um, and I, I, on page six, sorry, um, just kinda highlights what you can use it for and what you, and then seven is what you can't use it for. So, what we've kind of used it for right now is like extra cleaning services, just extra supplies, we have elections coming up, so we're just getting some extra stuff for that. Um, just to make sure people are safe and, um, you know, we, we got some little signs, like social distancing. Honestly, we will not come close to spending that money. So, what I'm proposing, and I want you to consider and look over, you know, before the next meeting, is possibly using the funding, um, it's for, we would work with the county, we would team up with them instead of doing it ourselves, because it's a lot of admin work, and they would do it all for us. So, it would be the Carver County CDA that would do it. It would be Small Business Emergency Assistance Fund, and then Emergency Housing Assistance Program. So, any business or residence, resident that meets the qualifications would be able to get assistance with the money that we, allocate to the county for, and it would just be for the city of mayor that they would use the money on.
How much do you think we've, we're gonna need to get reimbursed?
For our stuff? Probably less than ten grand.
Does that include, like, anything the fire department had to use for?
Um, yeah, I mean, if they.
Things they had to do?
Um, I can't.
There was.
I don't, I don't recall, like, a whole lot of extra stuff that they've had to do, but I can talk to Andy about it. But I really think we won't go over ten, um, and we gotta use it before the end of the year, we lose it.
What happens if we take an amount, and let's say we take a hundred thousand, I, you think, take the balance and put it in this?
I would say, I mean, it's.
So, let's say we put a hundred thousand in there.
Yeah.
And now we have people who apply and maybe twenty thousand's gone, and we got eighty still sitting, what do we do then?
Then it.
We get it back and we have time to, I mean, I think we should upgrade.
I thought it was a use it or lose it.
It's definitely use it or lose it.
Me too, it is, it is, but.
If there's eighty thousand dollars left over at the end of the year, they just kinda take it back.
I think what.
So, I would make sure the fire department has enough PP and all of the other disinfectant and stuff for here, and public works, for the remainder of the year. And for cleaning. I think we should possibly add cleaning to the other buildings.
Yep.
You know, like.
We've always had it, they're, they're using it as needed, that's.
Yeah.
We approve that.
I mean, I.
Well, I know, but I'm like saying, like, the bathrooms at the fire station, have they ever been cleaned professionally? We do, I, I, for me.
I, I think we're better off building a new building, instead of going in there.
No, but like having, you know, we talked about having our cleaning person come in and disinfecting that area, and I know that they said they were gonna do it, but, if we can use some of that money to. if we can use some of that money to help keep that
Right.
at a, a, a level since that's used quite a bit for.
And make sure that we're budgeted for that through the end of the year.
Yeah, and we definitely don't, I mean, we don't.
Twenty thousand, I mean.
Disinfecting the playgrounds and.
There's not really a good way to do it unless, like, I, I just, I'm trying to, I haven't, well, one, I haven't heard of any city doing it. Um. Yeah, I think you could do sprayers, but then it's like, how often and would you, would it be during the, during the.
Upgrade some of our technology for Zoom and.
Right, oh, right. That's what I was gonna ask.
Most things when we try to do electronically, they don't work.
Yeah, and I've actually.
They, they're horrible.
And I've actually talked to Tierney, who did this, and I did bring them in to help me identify what areas we could upgrade for COVID and spend the money on. I totally forgot about that. I'm sorry. I haven't gotten a quote yet. Um, but because they're.
Aside in case uh, one of our employees does get sick and, and to help pay that leave. And if in the end, at the end of the year, that portion didn't get ever used because nobody got sick and didn't have to use it, I, that's okay.
And we kind of discussed this at the last workshop, too. You know, COVID expenses that you were planning on spending on.
I'd kind of look for you guys to kind of make a little, a more of a proposal on.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Versus, I like this idea. I would love to get some into this small business and
Oh, yeah.
And to help. I know one business owner's already talked about he'd like to get a fogger to do his business, and it's about a grand, and I think that'd be a perfect, I mean, that would be the perfect thing to get, you know? And disinfect their businesses every day.
Yeah, and that, I, I just wanna say, too, the county has their own money that they're gonna be doing, um, small business grants and emergency housing assistance, too. But that's throughout the whole county. Um, but ours would be specific to mayor, so they can, you know, if ours.
Keep a small portion of it for.
Right. Right, so there's an opportunity, even if we don't, if we, our money runs out, their county would still have some, too, and like, it's just, it's kind of like a combination thing.
I'd like to allocate some money for that for our residents, to have additional access to funds.
Yep.
But I think we need to look at, you know, our contingency plans.
Exactly.
And just, you know.
Prepare for wave, too, if it, if it come, if that happens, if that happens. And again, we maybe have to zoom in, and if we can't have meetings, and it's a good time to do some of this stuff to beef up our, our technology.
Yep.
And then I would make sure public works and the fire department have all their things that they need um, supported. You know, and if that's more hand sanitizer, if that's actually going in and, you know, I mean, how hard is it for if, if after, you know, once a week after their Monday meeting, the cleaning company comes in and does a kind of a sterilizing? I mean, what's the harm in that?
We talked about, and they didn't, they didn't seem that they want it, they wanna do it themselves.
Well, I, I mean.
We offered that to everyone.
Okay.
I just think that this, even though we may get a new station, the nice cleaning one.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'll take a deeper look at.
We can disinfect, and we can do the community center after events, or, or the rooms, or there's things out there to be able to fog.
There's a company, Gracal, that's making them, um, up in St. Cloud, and there's a plant, these guns to sanitize. Might not be a bad thing to have our own. To have our own.
Oh, that sounds good. Um, yeah, so I'll get, I think I'll get kind of some, uh, yeah, I just wanted you guys to be aware of the, of these programs.
Sure that if we put money into this plan.
Okay.
If we put money into this plan, and we have to use it by December first. And November fifteenth comes along, and there's a pot, can we get it back and then have two weeks to
Right.
Get some other thing, or if it's, once it goes in that pool, is it in that pool?
Right, yeah, I'll definitely figure that out.
Cause if it turns out no one's using it, let's get it back and use it. I mean, we got a hundred and seventy grand.
Hmm. Yep, no, that makes sense. Okay. Yeah, we can table streets.
All right. Is everyone fine tabling number four? We are adjourned.
I thought I noticed. I was like, didn't you come in with something else then? I didn't.
Melissa said I should, said I should change it mid-meeting.
Oh, yeah, just, just be one of those, like, just. Bye, thank you.
Well, it was cute. You confirmed that I should do it.
Yeah.